I call to order the Washington County Board of Education. We have six members present this afternoon, and I declare quorum. At this time, I will have Mrs. Lynda Murray, board member, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll have approval of the agenda.
Is there approval?
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. For a second. Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there any discussion of the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval. All right. Six and student member concurs. Next, we'll have approval of the minutes.
I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, June 5, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Staff. Are there any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes? All those in favor of acceptance? Okay. Six and another set, Mr. Gassford?
Yes, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated same day, Tuesday, June 5, 2018.
Thank you. For a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes? All those in favor? Okay. Six and the student member concurs. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Okay. Very excited tonight that we have presentations to make, actually tonight, all to staff members. Frequently, we do students, but tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize quite a few of our staff members for accomplishments they have. So, in a few minutes, I'm going to ask Jeff Pruitt to come forward. He's going to share about our superior rating that Clear Spring Middle School achieved. This is a result of a lot of work from our trade staff, but particularly, our custodial staff is who we'll be honoring today. Also, our food service staff was recognized for the Meal Machine effort. It's an effort that occurs in the summer to feed our students, and Jeff's going to share a little bit about that. Followed by that, Paula Moore is going to come up and share a little bit about a young lady named Carolyn Mark, who's been honored as state world language teacher. She'll have the correct title, and she's moving on to some regional competition and hopefully, national competition, so we're excited about that. And our final part of the first part of my presentation will be Mr. Steve O'Farrell. Will come forward. The Special Education Citizen Advisory Committee has selected individuals that represent the Special Education Department, both in ESP and in the teacher ranks, and we're going to honor those recipients of the Citizen Advisory Committee tonight. So, with that, I'd like to invite Mr. Pruitt forward, and after he shares the information about the first presentation, we'll invite the board to go down front, and then we'll stay there for the remainder of the presentations and greet our guests.
Good afternoon, members of the board. This afternoon, I'm pleased to provide members of our Clear Spring Middle School custodial team for receiving a superior rating on their inspection of the school through the public school construction program. The public school construction program inspects schools all across the state. Typically, they would have done six or seven schools within the county, but because of Washington County's historically good and superior ratings, they only selected one school over the past year, and that school was Clear Spring Middle, and it did receive a superior rating. The custodial staff has a tremendous role in that, ensuring that, you know, we're clean, we're set up, we're ready to go for students, and that we're turning over larger work orders through our system to our maintenance team to handle as well, so we don't want to forget them, but we do have our custodial team to recognize here today. And so, with that, I'll read the names of the members that are here for you, and we have certificates for them as well. And custodian Brandon McFadden.
Congratulations.
Also, special members of our team that are here. Mr. King is here, the Assistant Principal at Clear Spring Middle, and Ms. Christine Corbille, the Principal at Clear Spring Middle. Ms. Corbille will also be accepting a certificate on behalf of Mr. Dave Whitmer, who was our second shift lead custodian, who was with the school system for 14 years, and unfortunately, Mr. Whitmer passed away last week, just prior to his retirement, and Mrs. Corbille will present that certificate to his family and is receiving it on their behalf.
One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Absolutely. Today, we're also recognizing some of our Food and Nutrition Service members that have worked on the Meal Machine program. Recently, the Meal Machine program was recognized by No Kid Hungry, which is an initiative of Share Our Strength Food Service Initiative to find food for healthy kids all across the country, in a video, really talking about meal, mobile meal programs in the summer and how that can impact our communities. And if you can bear with us, we have a short 20 to 30-second video that we'd like to roll, and we can show that video to you now.
The kids that swarm the truck when we come. At one of our sites, when we pull in the lot, they're running to the truck, and they're lining up before we even get out of the truck. So, I mean, you know that they're looking, they're looking for the trucks so that they can eat that day.
There's a lot of poverty, and, you know, during the school year, they are coming to school, they are getting fed. When school's out, we're not there for them, and that's where the mobile program came into place. You know, we were operating school-open sites, but the problem was, kids, a lot of times, didn't have the means to get to the school site, so we knew that we needed to take the food to them. Cindy and Dawn are amazing. They were, you know, here from day one with our big Meal Machine. When the posting comes out each summer, they always ask, we want to do that program again.
Sometimes, you could really tell when they first sit down and start to eat, they're, like, really devouring it. They're really hungry, you know? They're not worried about anybody else or what anybody's doing.
We have young kids that come. A lot of the kids, they really need us to come so that they can have that meal for the day. I've done this for, like, the last six years, and I've gotten to know these kids, and they just, they touch my heart, like, you know, you get to know them and you love them, like, you know, they're yours.
So, No Kid Hungry really helped us to expand this program, providing cold-holding equipment, tables for the kids to sit down, shade by being able to put awnings out. It's a very proud moment. Every community has areas of need, and I think that, you know, the approach we've taken is, they are our kids, and, yes, they're not in our school buildings, but they're our kids, so we're going to go out and feed them. We feed them during the school year, so why not go out and feed them during the summer?
Kind of hard not to get emotional when you watch that video and to see how the staff cares for those students, and I do want to recognize Mr. Remble, as you saw in the video. This was his brainchild seven years ago, and he brought this to me in my old role as supervisor of Food and Nutrition Services, and I wasn't sure it was going to work, and we asked him to run it down, and it's blossomed, and it's a tremendous program from our community. So, my personal thanks to Mr. Remble and his initiative, and wearing on me to make sure it happened. So, with that, I'll ask the members to come forward. First to receive a certificate is Mike Embley, the current supervisor of Food and Nutrition Don Brown, assistant manager. Nicole Downey, food service assistant. Jennifer Carter, satellite leader. Julie Gier, manager. Ruth Tinney, satellite leader. Erin Poster, manager. Cindy Mock, manager. Karen Smith, food service assistant. Mary Hauser, satellite leader. Kristi Funk, food service assistant. And Bob Burnett, food service assistant. And Marcia McNeil, assistant manager.
I'm honored to present to you Senora Caroline Mark, the 2018 Maryland World Language Teacher of the Year. She was selected for this honor by the Maryland Foreign Language Association. It was a privilege to nominate Senora Mark for this award. She was chosen through a rigorous selection process after a review of written applications and interviews for finalists. Caroline will now advance to the regional competition, to the Northeast Conference for the Teaching of Foreign Languages in New York City in February, where teachers from Maine to Maryland will be selected as a regional winner and then advanced to the national level. We are very proud of Senora Mark of Smithburg High School for being the 2018 Maryland World Language Teacher of the Year.
Feliz Lares, Feliz Pasionet.
Do a good thing again for one more.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to come to speak to you today. My name is Steve O'Farrell, and I'm the current chair of the Washington County CAC, and I'm very pleased to first say that our group, CAC, has seen exponential growth over the last year and a half. We grew, we have started with about three members, and now we're over 40. We have all of our subcommittees full, and as part of our mission, we felt that it was incumbent to recognize excellence in the special education community. We have some truly excellent people, and we felt that it was time to recognize their efforts through a process of balloting and nomination of those people. They were vetted, and we had three winners this year, two of which are here in the room. Amanda Burns, who was our, or who is our Special Education Teacher of the Year, is on a much-needed vacation, so she's not here today, but two of our winners are here today, so if I can go ahead and introduce them. First, Ms. Bridget Stein is our Case Manager of the Year from Bonxtown Elementary School. And our Paraprofessional of the Year is Susan Doe. Thank you.
Just a couple of things, maybe we'll come back to superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. At this time, we'll have public comment. I'd like to read from Board Policy KD. Each person, we do. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged, but not required, to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County public schools, except personnel, excuse me, or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. Mr. Bobby Folds. Good afternoon, Mr. Folds.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Bickford is our timekeeper, and he'll explain what he's going to do for you there to make sure you don't exceed your time limit.
Three seconds left. If you need it, I'll hold up yellow and then red is done. You get a four, five minutes.
Okay. I can, I can do that. Hello, everyone on the board, Mr. Michael, Dr. Michael, right. I thank you for the privilege to be able to talk. My name, as you know, is Robert Folds, a custodian for WSCPS since January 10 of 2007. So, that's 11 years that I have worked for the board. Been dedicated in everything that I do. I work hard each day. I try to do as much work as possible within the time limit that is given me and do all During that time, I had gotten, I was working, let me back up a little bit. I'm a little nervous. This is not my forte, although you guys do a wonderful job. I started at Williamsport High School as a regular custodian on third shift, and one year later, I put in for a head custodian at an elementary school, which was Potomac Heights Elementary, and was able to get that job. Kelsey was the principal at that time. Her and I hit it off very well. We had concerns about the kids, and she asked for volunteers one day to, some of our slow students need something to help them grow and help them feel part of the school. So, I said, well, I volunteer. So, we decided to build picnic tables for the school. So, we went out and purchased them, and then, and this was all after school, and we built, I showed them how to build picnic tables. So, we built them and then painted them and discarded them around the school, and the students and teachers had recognized these students that weren't recognized before to, and that made them do better in school. These achievements that, through Kelsey's guidance and her asking me if I would volunteer to do this, played a part in a lot of kids' life since I was there at, for five years over at Potomac Heights Elementary School. During my time there, I got this unexpected Silver Hammer Award, which I didn't know that was out there before, but, and the Golden Apple Award, and a Maryland Award, which all these were unexpected, but they asked me questions, and evidently, I asked the right, I answered the right questions, and the school, they liked what was being done there as far as taking care of it. And during that time, you know, I was in charge of safety for the kids. I did all the fire alarms. I called the fire department, so we didn't have the fire people come there as we, you can, that can happen sometimes when you get excited and you don't, you get the cart before the horse, so, but was able to keep the kids safe. I was able to greet them. So I say that to, we, the, the department is doing a reorganization of the custodial staff. I feel that each level that we do in life, and as a custodian, from a regular custodian to a head custodian, and now I'm a custodian at Western Heights Middle School, and we want to keep everyone safe. And if, and the reorganization is pointing out that they were, they're eliminating our jobs. And I am just, I just wanted to point that out. And I got the stop sign. So I thank you for the privilege to be able to talk to you and, and voice, and there's many of my colleagues that we'll probably talk to, but I am the first of many. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Okay, Mr. Foltz was the only individual we had signed up ahead of time. Is there anyone else in the audience who'd like this opportunity to come before the board for public comment? Okay. Okay, at this time, we can have board member response to public comment. Any of my colleagues like to respond?
I would just like to say, thank you, Mr. Foltz. Thank you for your years of service as a custodian. You can tell that you really care about the students as well as your job. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz, again, for all you've done and all you continue to do. It's very appreciated. Okay, we have no old business this afternoon, so we'll move to new business. And our first item of new business is a donation to North Hagerstown High School. Dr. Akers is here with us this afternoon. Tell us about that. Dr. Akers.
Good afternoon, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. On behalf of North Hagerstown High School, I am requesting your approval of a donation from Ahold Del Hayes USA resulting from the Martins Food Stores A-plus Rewards Program. The donation is in the amount of $5,913.82. The money will be put into the athletic fund at North Hagerstown High School to help pay for athletic equipment.
Thank you, Dr. Akers. Is there a motion?
I move to approve a gift in the amount of $5,913.82 to North Hagerstown High School from Ahold USA Food, Martins Food Stores A-plus Rewards Program.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. So the motion is on approval of the gift to North Hagerstown High School from Ahold Del Hayes USA. Any discussion or questions for Dr. Akers?
Is this what people sign up when they go grocery shopping and sort of designate the school they want them to? Okay, good. Thank you.
Are there some favor of approving this gift to North High? Okay, six, and the student member concurs. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Mr. Bagdell?
Good afternoon, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Today, I have fourteen items for your review. These items were reviewed by our Purchasing Review Committee and are being recommended for approval. I would also like to make the board aware of a few emergency procurements made to external vendors that were authorized by Dr. Michael in accordance with Board Policy DJ. These procurements were repairs and data recovery after the fire suppression system was activated on our server room. To date, there has been a total of, the invoices have totaled $95,132.60. And there's been four vendors, the TAM Group, Fire X Sales and Service, Edgy Point Educational, Ed, I'm sorry, Edgy Point Educational Systems, and IBM Corporation. Two of those invoices have been in excess of $25,000. Edgy Point Educational Systems was $26,875. And IBM Corporation was $60,491.53. And staff is available if you have any questions on that or the items.
Thank you, Mr. Bagdell. Is there a motion?
President, I move to approve the awards, procurements, and extension for internal school auditing services to Ronald Schiffler at a cost of $64,375. Employee medical prescription and third-party admin renewal to Cigna at a total cost of Preliminary SAT, PSAT tests to College Board at a cost of $37,950. Equality of access to advanced coursework to equal-opportunity schools at a cost of Food products and distribution for K through twelve and other public agencies, extension to Premier Inc. at the unit prices listed. Fleet vehicle purchase from National Auto Fleet Group at a total cost of $109,516.67. Fleet vehicle purchase from Chriswell Chevrolet at a total cost of $87,418. Furniture and equipment from Duron Inc. and Lake Shore Inc. not to exceed $75,000. Frontline Education software modules from Frontline Education at a total cost of $131,581.12. Library media furniture from Duron Inc. and Milos Inc. at a total cost of $48,166.90. Technology education supplies, furniture and equipment from Amtech Company Inc. at a total cost of $378,639. Supplemental resource for elementary mathematics from Houghton Mifflin Harcourt at a total cost of $252,796.73. High school laptop pilot from CDWG at a total cost of $545,600. And summer lit camps from Scholastic at a total cost of $82,371.45.
Gessford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Bagdell or any discussion? Mrs. Fisher?
First of all, before we get to the, the actual consent agenda, will any of the emergency expenses be covered by insurance?
We anticipate that may, this will be part of our thing with May. We do have a $10,000 deductible, but we anticipate that, with the exception of $10,000, that all of it will be covered by May.
It's an unfortunate event, Perry, but at least that'll cover. I have two questions then about the consent agenda. The materials for the summer lit camps, would you happen to have any information about the number of students this will serve?
I don't think Peggy's shaking her head no. So I think this is the...
Dr. Akers, yes?
There'd be about a hundred. We've invited students. At this point, we're not always sure how many will sign, sign up, but I think that's what we anticipate will come per group.
And this is likely to be a continuation then in future summers?
I think we're going to see how this goes. We've kind of structured it a little bit different, summer school this year, trying to get more advancement of our students, kind of recover that summer learning loss and build upon where we're going in September.
And my last question has to do with item number seven. The truck, three large trucks, double cab for snow removal and to haul mowing equipment around. No, I guess it's a number six, not seven. I'm sorry. I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't assume, that they're double cabs because they have to haul several people around to use the yard equipment?
That's correct. So they're actually, you know, the, the new term double cab is actually what we've always referred to as the extended cab. So in trucks, you have regular cab, extended cab, and crew cab. So this is sort of the middle version, but it can haul multiple members of the team. So again, as we're working through our reorganization with the custodial team and we're developing grounds crews, a crew can go in a truck with multiple mowers, multiple other pieces of equipment, and they can launch on a campus. And this is, this will be the, the equipment for that team to work throughout the county.
Crew caps, so they're not the double door, big double door caps, because we wouldn't regularly be using them that way. Also, the, the team is going through the fleet carefully. We're taking the equipment off the road that has high mileage or has rust. We've also moved some equipment around to other members of the team based on the needs of the vehicles. So a number of the, a number of these items involve purchase of vehicles, but we've been very strategic about what we're doing with vehicles. And these are long, long lead items, so we've ordered these, much like we did one of the other vehicles might take some time to come in.
Probably about six months till we get these.
Order manufacturer. And, and these, these vehicles also will assist in sort of the overall snow removal effort in regions where we're currently contracting services. So we may be able to reduce those costs long-term.
So part of our effort to reduce contractual services, and we took advantage of pricing. By ordering, we can get a better price rather than off the lot, so.
Any other questions?
The other question I had was item thirteen, the high school laptop pilot. Is this, is this a, I know we've discussed whether we're going to transition to laptops for high schools. Is this the start of that? Are we looking into that?
So I wouldn't say it's a full transition, but we have selected North High. And we've talked about this for last year or so, since the iPad plan. A number of people felt like at high school, is the iPad the perfect device? So this is our initial start at going back to a laptop device, Chromebook. Laptops have been, or the Chromebooks have been purchased for every student at North High as well as staff. So it's going to be a true pilot. We'll see how that works. Cost-wise, it's almost a wash with the iPad, and the Chromebooks have come a long way since we started the iPad plan. Initially, even a Chromebook, as cheap as it was at one time, didn't do all the things that these Chromebooks will do. So they're kind of in between a laptop and tablet-type device. So we're very excited about this pilot.
Will they keep their iPads also at North High or will they be distributed at other schools?
Yeah, iPads will be recollected. We'll keep a certain amount of iPads there at North High in actually charging carts because we'll have some application for those based on how instructions have already been rolled out. We don't want to take that away. But the individual devices students will have will be the Chromebook.
So it'll be the same as iPads where they take them home?
Yes.
All students or just a certain grade?
Nine through twelve is our pilot. And we'll share more about our digital learning plan. I guess it'll be 3.0 going into the fall. We'll ask Mike Hanek to, to share an update on where we see that going in the future.
So where we, do we have laptops or?
They have iPads right now, so those are collected. They'll be redistributed to other schools as replacement iPads. They may be a newer iPad than what other schools have. They'll just be part of our inventory. They won't, won't go to waste at all.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? Then we'll move to the vote. The vote is for...
I just want to say this, if I may. I just want to say that lately, I've had a couple of people come up to me in the community and talk about the school budget. I don't want to beat a dead horse, but they've, they've said that, they've made the comment to me that they still think that there's money to be saved within the school budget. And people, you know, my answer to them is, you just don't realize what the system has to pay for out of the budget money that we do get. It's much more than just paying teachers and buying supplies and things like that. Some of these things here today are example that, purchasing pickup trucks, for example, and so forth like that. All these things are, serve a purpose in the modern school system.
Anyone else? Okay, so the emotion, so the motion is on approval of the consent agenda as read by Mr. Bigford. All those in favor? And student member concurs, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're back to the second half of the superintendent's report.
Okay, first, the next segment will be an update on the health education curriculum, K through twelve, an overview. I believe the team shared a little bit with the curriculum committee. We wanted to share that information with the entire board, some things that have been mandated to be added to the curriculum and just some changes that we've had. So we have Eric Michael with us this afternoon, as well as Dr. Pugh.
Good afternoon. We're here today to share with you the curriculum planning work that has been done to comply with the Heroin and Opioid Education and Community Action Act of 2017, and as well the Sexual Abuse and Assault Awareness and Prevention Program also legislated. Eric Michael, Supervisor of Health, Phys Ed, and Athletics, will share the approach his team has taken in planning to provide the age-appropriate opioid and prescription drug abuse prevention lessons in kindergarten through grade five, grade six through eight, and in high school health classes that all address the family life and human sexuality standards that are required.
So to start off with, we have, in Comar, our Code of Maryland Regulations, we have standards. There are seven standards that we follow, and that's what we teach our curriculum through. I briefly want to go through, but I want to kind of give you a quick overview of what actually is in those standards. The first standard is mental health, emotional, mental and emotional health. This encompasses communication and decision-making entirely through the whole K to twelve, or K to high school. And I think those are two big things and big ideas we talk about. When I talk to the teachers, we talk about giving kids toolkits, tools to use to make decisions and communicate. I think that's a big part of health, to be able to tell somebody when something's wrong and, and communicate that, and also to be able to make decisions about choices. Example, you make a decision to put a seatbelt on or not, that can have serious consequences. So that's important, and that's why it's K to twelve. But this encompasses beyond decision-making. We talk about how to accept failure, how to understand that everyone doesn't win. How do you accept that? How do you get along? It goes from there into dealing with stress. What are triggers with your stress? What are, what are things that make you, put you under stress and how to deal with that? Into mental illness, depression, and then when we get to high school, we really dig down into suicide and, and how to prevent suicide. The second standard is alcohol, tobacco, opioids, and other drugs. It's kind of self-explanatory there. We examine different types of alcohol, how it affects the body, tobacco, the different types of tobacco, and various drugs. One legislation we'll talk about in a moment is when the opioids are put in there as well. Personal consumer health is just that. It's personal health. We talk as early as hygiene, how to take care of it from spreading germs. Then it goes on to products that you may or may not use, how you decide, and then health services that are available in the community. Family life and human sexuality, that is where we get into what is a family unit. We start talking in fifth grade about, about the anatomy, changing puberty, the reproductive system, and continue on as we go into middle school.
The first standard is mental health, emotional, mental and emotional health. This encompasses communication and decision-making entirely through the whole K to 12, or K to high school. And I think those are two big things and big ideas we talk about. When I talk to the teachers, we talk about giving kids toolkits, tools to use to make decisions and communicate. I think that's a big part of health, to be able to tell somebody when something's wrong and, and communicate that, and also to be able to make decisions about choices. Example, you make a decision to put a seatbelt on or not, that can have serious consequences. So that's important, and that's why it's K to 12. But this encompasses beyond decision-making. We talk about how to accept failure, how to understand that everyone doesn't win, how do you accept that? How do you get along? It goes from there into dealing with stress. What are triggers with your stress? What are, what are things that make you, put you under stress and how to deal with that? Into mental illness, depression, and then when we get to high school, we really dig down into suicide and, and how to prevent suicide. The second standard is alcohol, tobacco, opioids, and other drugs. It's kind of self-explanatory there. We examine different types of alcohol, how it affects the body, tobacco, the different types of tobacco, and various drugs. One legislation we'll talk about in a moment is when the opioids are put in there as well. Personal consumer health is just that, it's personal health. We talk as early as hygiene, how to take care of it from spreading germs, then it goes on to products that you may or may not use, how you decide, and then health services that are available in the community. Family life and human sexuality, that is where we get into what is a family unit. We start talking in fifth grade about, about the anatomy, changing puberty, the reproductive system, and continue on as we go into middle school. We continue with talking about childbirth, contraception, and an abstinence is always taught. We go into safety injury, injury prevention, which includes personal safety, how to respond to emergencies. Think of Children's Village in second grade is a, is a good example of that. We do CPR, first aid training at that, and then we go into what abuse is, what assault is, and what harassment is, and then continue on into sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. And then nutrition and fitness, again, that's talking about the food we put into our body, what is appropriate, what should we eat, what shouldn't we eat to make decisions with that. We talk about body image, and we talk about fitness and goal-setting with fitness plans. And then last is the disease prevention control. This standard talks about obvious things such as the diseases we may catch, virals, viruses that we may catch, preventive practices, things such as simple as putting sunscreen on prevents skin cancer. We talk about those things that we can do into, back into the STIs, which is sexually transmitted infections, and HIV/AIDS awareness. So two of the most recent updates in legislation are Senate Bill 1060, which expands existing drug educate, drug addiction and prevention program to include heroin and education, opioid education, and House Bill 72, which has outlined the expectations for including sexual abuse, assault, instructional topics to include, to be included in local curriculum. So if we dig deeper into House Bill, or excuse me, Senate Bill 1060, which is the heroin opioid act, as we call it, in health education, the curriculum has always included heroin and opioids because it was listed as other drugs. However, the legislation required that we point that out specifically, the state of Maryland put opioids in the title of standard two. And then, as we said, we've always talked about tobacco, alcohol, but now we do age-appropriate education to address the heroin, opioid, and fentanyl use. This is, to do this, the legislation says that we have to teach this in grade bands of three to five, six to eight, and in nine to 12 high school, which means somewhere in that grade is where you would teach that. So as an example, when you start thinking about drugs, we really start in like kindergarten, and we start talking about medicine in general. So we talk about what is medicine, what is the purpose of medicine, and, and have students understand what that is, when is it appropriate to take medicine, and who would it be appropriate to take medicine from? So you would want to take, your parents would give you medicine when you're a child, when you're ill. Then we go into understanding that we don't take medicine from a friend, and then even if a doctor prescribes, you know, that would, you'd take a certain amount. If you find something that looks like a pill on the ground, we learn not to take that and, and do anything with it. If we did take medicine and had a bad effect or something that felt sick, then we need to make sure we go talk to an adult. So that would, that's kind of how we talk and build up on medicine with the elementary student. Specifically speaking, when we talk about opioids, that is mentioned in standards in fifth grade. That's when we actually talk about the opioids and heroin. And at that age, that's what we simply say what it is, describe what it does to the body, and then some consequences of it. As we move into middle school, that's where we get a little bit deeper. We talk about the abuse of it, the difference between prescription opioids and illegal drugs, and the legal consequences. And then, as we get into high school, the high school class really digs down into substance abuse with that, and what that looks like and, and prevention of that. So House Bill 72 is the sexual harassment. It's implemented in, it's implemented in awareness of prevention of sexual abuse and assault. The curriculum supervisors certify that we are teaching this to the superintendent, who will then certify us to the state that sexual abuse and assault are instructional topics included in the curriculum and taught to students. The last certification, the bill was passed in 2016. The last time we did a certification is 2015. The next time we will do certification is 2020. We have been teaching this. However, the state MSD, we just attended, I took a team, April 30th, just did a big conference. The state of Maryland has presented us with lots of resources that are free to us to use to make sure we're implementing things correctly, and our teachers have resources to, to teach this. So we're looking forward to, that team is going to be presenting that stuff in August, and our teachers will have new resources to teach this. This is primarily taught with our traveling family life teachers, they're health teachers, when they teach the family life and sexual, human sexuality, is where we teach the sexual abuse with that group. And then, in the accountability model for every student succeeds act, fifth grade students are to be enrolled in and pass physical education and health. Eighth grade students are required to be enrolled in physical education and health for access to a well-rounded curriculum. Physical education and health are graduation requirements at the high school level. So prior to this, health has been at the lower levels, middle school and elementary school, kind of pocketed. It's been taught, integrated through different other content areas. And by us bringing this in with every student succeeds act, we need to make sure that every student has a grade in health in middle and elementary school, and also that have it on their schedule. So the way this looks at the elementary school is our health will be taught by physical education teachers. The grade for health will be reported in the health and healthy lifestyle cluster standards on the report card. These standards have been mapped out by physical education teachers. I've had a team working on this, they've created the plan, we've trained them what, how they're going to teach it, and then coming in August, they're going to train the rest of the teachers on how to teach our health units. Mental health and fitness and disease prevention, they're integrated into our physical education curriculum already, so we're not going to pull them out. They were already, the standards of health are already taught with those. And then the family life and human sexuality is taught in fifth grade. We have two traveling teachers that will travel to all the elementary schools and teach that. So every time a student walks into an elementary physical education class, they will receive health instruction, all right? And think about it, every, every month, they're going to be building on top of, of something, whatever that is for that marking period, whatever that topic is. In middle school, the same thing, physical education teachers will be teaching the health education. Each marking period, they will have units of study, and that will be what will be posted on the report card. And again, all the standards will be addressed in the physical education classes for health. And the family life and human sexuality units will be taught by the traveling family life teachers. And then in high school, high school is a, we have health, education, life skills, and financial literacy. It's a one-credit course in Washington County. It's generally taught in 10th grade, however, some ninth graders are also taking it at this as well. It's taught by a certified health teacher. All seven standards are addressed in the high school class. And in addition, we also complete 15 hours of student service learning during that time, which is a requirement for graduation. Additionally, the curriculum content for K to 12 health education plan certifies, or excuse me, satisfies the legislation requirements that we talked about earlier. As I said, I feel pretty confident, I feel very confident going forward that we are addressing a K to 12 better than we ever have done in the past. And we're also looking forward, because the heroin opioid is such a community-based issue that we are looking to solve and help solve, we are looking forward to working with Washington County. They have Washington Goes Purple, which is a awareness going in, September, I guess is when it's going to take place. We've made, we've had contact and are going to meet in the next few weeks to see how we can help and bring light to that as well in the classroom.
If there's time, we'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Comments? I have a few, if I may. My question, you mentioned the standards, and the standards are being addressed, and you mentioned units of study, and I'm assuming that for elementary school and for middle school, there are units of study, so that that would standardize things, making sure that students regardless of in which school they are taught, they are receiving the same information as another child in the same grade would in another part of the county. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if I wanted to look at one of those units of study, would I be able to access that somewhere on our website? I know I can look at standards, but if I want to see an actual unit of study and what would appear in that unit of study or that module, is that available to me?
Yes, yes enough. Here's the yes part.
Okay.
The yes part is the elementary is almost done. If you would go to the elementary and you look, when you go into the curriculum, you will see the table of contents, you will see under each market or each grade level, you'll see physical education standards, and you'll see the health. And that'll be the health topics and health information that will be taught during that time. When I say the no part, we're still working on that. I'm a meeting next week with the middle school team and high schools, or excuse me, middle school and elementary to finalize that, put all that together, get all the resources in there. So in probably two weeks, I should have everything ready to go up in there to, for everyone to look at and be able to see exactly what's being taught and, and what information's going to be given.
Okay, great.
And the idea is, I have made, I sent an email to all my teachers before they left to make sure they're checking that, because in the month of July, things will be uploaded for them to go in and look at ahead of time to kind of start to familiarize themselves with, and we'd have training in, in August for that.
In August, okay. And then my other question is with regard to the number of times that, say, an elementary student would see the phys ed teacher per week? Is that, do they see them once a week, twice a week, every day?
On, on average, it's, it's once a week. It's the average for a, a student in Washington County, 1:50 minute course.
So.
So what the health part would look like on top of that is, you think we would come in, they would get information as part, during part of that class. That would build every time, so the idea is within a month's time, we will go through what would be a mini-unit, if you will. And again, if we're looking at the elementary standards, they're, they're very generic and, and small. So example, in kindergarten, if we're looking at heroin, the, the, yeah, the drugs, all we're looking at is for them to understand what medicine is and what are safe uses of medicine. And for that example, would, you know, all we'd want them to understand is medicine is something that helps you, helps get rid of, most part, most of the time, they're going to be able to tell you that it's something when they're sick that they take to make them feel better, and that's really what we want them to understand, that it's not something they go and take on their own. And then, of course, it would build from there.
Okay. So my understanding then is, from what you're saying, a child would have a part of their phys ed period, a little bit of health, and then the phys activity.
Right.
Whatever that might be, okay?
And they're building back the assessments for that. So it's discussion-based, because they're in phys ed so that they can have physical activity. So it's as they're doing warm-ups, as they're getting ready, the discussion is around medicine, and it's focused and it's layered, and then they have an assessment at the end that goes with them. We've been talking about this each time we've met with you for the month, and so here, we're going to test that you understand what we've been talking about in terms of the safe use of medicine.
Okay. So then, my next question is, is there at any other point in, let's say, the elementary school curriculum that these topics such as opioids would be addressed? And I think back to my years of teaching fourth grade when we taught about systems of the body, would those things, those standards and those contents?
Could they cross over into other? Yes, they, they could.
So the integration that you spoke about earlier, does that still exist, or has that integration ceased because we're now doing?
Well, the integration, the integration, I think, where, where we're looking at is, is now with physical education taking over and doing it, we're assured that we're going to touch on every standard and through our, through our content. When I talked about integration, physical, some of the health standards were, are also integrated into physical education, were already taught at the elementary level. So that's, that's the integration I was talking about. However, we are looking, so as example, I just gave some children's books, elementary books today to Ms. Hanks to look through, that we may put them in corporate, in them in school library. They're, they're based off looking at the, the sexual abuse, understanding, you know, that's the, that's the loose topic of, of it, but for kids to understand self-esteem, understand when to tell an adult something's not right. So that's, those type of things are how we're going to try to integrate where it fits.
And I, and I would say that the others didn't go away. This is just ensuring that we can actually point to it and say, a student earned knowledge of those standards, and, and we, we have a, a place where we can give them a recorded grade, and that's in addition to what they were getting with the integrated units. There's a lot in social studies with social awareness and, and your, your town and about yourself, so there'll still be those interdisciplinary things, but this is a place where we can say that every student got it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
How does a student get 15 hours of student service learning from high school health education?
Generally, they do, they do a project. One, kind of one of the neatest projects that, that one of our schools did, the students researched drug, they did, they did a health fair for the middle school. So basically, what they did was research drug, they did a presentation, and then they spent two days, I thi, I believe, going to the middle school. The middle school did, it was incorporated through the physical education class. The, the students in the middle school physical education class then basically, almost like they would go to each table and learn about a different topic, and drugs and alcohol, that the high school students presented to them. So that's, that's one example.
Is that a county determination that that's worth 15 hours, or is that a state determination that a project like that is worth 15 hours, or?
That's a county.
And how's that calculated for 15 hours?
The teachers keep track, the teachers keep track of the hours, yeah.
Hours built into sixth, seventh, and eighth grades, I believe, and then students earn hours on their own to round out their seven, 75 hours that's required. That's been pretty much a longstanding, pretty much statewide setup.
It's, it sort of goes, it goes by community. Each community sort of, at times have, have different things. When I was in Hancock, the students there worked with, with tri-state community center on doing a health fair, public health fair in this, in the town that the community needed.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dr. Michael.
Thank you.
Just a few other things. I want to go back to the procurement to answer Mrs. Fisher's question. We have about 1,000 elementary students involved in the summer lit camp materials, about 190 secondary students. I had an update here from staff, so I wanted to share that. Also, just, I wanted to thank our retirees and wish them well in their future, also our students and staff that are off for the summer. I hope they have a great summer. I know we had a great retirement dinner last week, and it's always a lot of fun. On our website, we've updated some information regarding next year's academic calendar, still starts the same time, still will estimate to end the same time, but we try to provide some additional information about possibilities of how we might make up snow days on days we're currently scheduled to be off. If we happen to know early enough in the year, we might look at, you know, how we might adjust the calendar to take advantage of that. We've also clarified that June 14th would be the last day of school, assuming we only had five snow days. If we have less than five snow days, it'll, it'll back up and be sooner. If we had no snow days, it'll be June 7th. And also alert the staff and the community, there are possibilities that we could go later than June 14th. So we're just trying to make that information available to staff, students, parents, so they can plan for next year. Again, our summer school hours started this week. Generally, schools are open, you know, roughly seven to five. If you ever have any trouble getting ahold of anybody at a school, please don't hesitate to contact the central office. There's generally someone available here from seven to 5:30 Monday through Thursday. And I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We'll move on to personnel action. Dr. Pugh?
Good afternoon again. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
We have to accept the personnel report.
Thank you, for a second.
Second.
The vote is on acceptance of personnel recommendations. All those in favor? Okay, six votes, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Ms. Williams, if I might, I'd like to announce two of the staff changes. Mr. Dan Fowler will be principal at Hickory Elementary School, and Tamsin Wilson will be principal of Smithburg Elementary School. So I want to congratulate them and look forward to what they'll do at their schools. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to reports to the board, and we'll start with curriculum instruction.
Curriculum instruction will not be meeting until August.
Thank you. Facilities?
Nothing to report on facilities.
Thank you. Finance? Finance?
Finance as well will be meeting in August.
Thank you. Mr. Riedner's not here for human resources, policy and?
There will be a meeting probably in July.
For finance?
No, for human resource.
Okay, meeting in July. Thank you, Mr. Gesford. And you said no meeting for finance?
That's correct.
Okay. Policy and review, Mrs. Fisher.
Policy committee has not met since our last business meeting, however, we will meet next Wednesday, June 27th, at 9:15, and that will probably be an extended meeting.
Thank you. Diallo, anything for student government? Nope, we're done with student government activities for the year. Right, thank you.
Did you, I think you said finance, but probably meant facilities, right? There's nothing in first facilities?
No, no. HR, it, it looks like we were having some conversation, and we're not having one in this month, but July and August is what I was saying, since Mr. Riedner was not here.
Right, but facilities?
I mean, in July, okay.
No.
So there's no meeting in July for facilities?
Not that, not that I know of.
Okay. All right, are we clear, Mr. Bigford? Did I misspeak? All right, thank you for clarifying.
I'll give you a call, Peter. Let's, just make sure.
We won't, we won't let you miss a meeting. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the consideration of future agenda items, and you have a list of future agenda items. We have one meeting in July instead of our usual two, and that is July 17th, and there will be an update on the autism life skill and summit programs. And then we have some other things coming up in August. I would like to remind my colleagues of the professional development opportunity tomorrow, it's being held here in the board conference room at 1 o'clock, and that is with the professional development person from Mabe, Molly Young, so I'm looking forward to that. If you have any suggestions for future agenda items, please let a member of the agenda planning committee know, that would be Dr. Michael, Mr. Staffer, or myself, and we'll see if we can get something on an upcoming agenda. And that brings us then to board member comments. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to begin?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Gesford?
Nothing this afternoon.
Nothing? Mr. Staffer?
Nothing.
Mr. Bigford?
I'll continue to trans, nothing.
I just want to say that I really enjoyed this being my first year, I really enjoyed the graduation ceremonies, I, I thought they were very well-run, and it was very nice to be there. I enjoyed being at the retirement dinner the other night, and I especially enjoyed the Ready Set Play from the Washington County Public Schools Foundation, the first time they've had that this year, it was held at North High, and it was a big success, so I look forward to doing that again next year.
Mr. Diallo?
Well, I guess it's going to be my last public, my last board member comment, so I prepared this one, so it's not going to be as unorganized as the last time. So, it was pretty interesting serving as a student member this year. After being on the outside of its inner workings my whole life, this year I was granted the opportunity to watch and be involved in the constant changes that are done within our, within our system of education. The average student has no idea what incredible dedication and unrelenting work ethic goes into running all of their schools. Everything in the classroom down to the microscopic level is calculated and accounted for here at CES. What I can say after one year of, one year of being here, is that Washington County is in a great place. The staff in this, the staff within this building and all the other schools in our county are dedicated to improving upon experience. There's never been a complacent day when we've been satisfied with our presupposed limits. WCPS continues the challenge, WCPS continues to challenge the boundaries, and that's the reason as to why students are able to receive the best education in the state over here. Though it's very bittersweet to let go of these colleagues I've worked with, I'm confident that this group of innovative individuals will continue to propel the trajectory of our county's education forward. Thank you Superintendent Michael, thank you board members, and thank you all WCPS staff for granting me with this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. The skills I've learned here are skills that I will take with me into the professional world that I'll soon be a part of, so thank you for everything, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diallo, and I know that I speak for my board members, or my fellow board members, when I say that we wish you all the best, a happy, safe summer, and we know you do great things there and at the University of Southern California, so it's been a pleasure working with you. With that, we'll adjourn. Meeting adjourned.